Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Wa'dubillahi binasyaitan radji'm bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Rabb israhi sadr'i wa yasirli amri wa xulul uqdatam nisan yafqahu qawli. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim wa ala'asr inna l'inisanal afi xusr illa lazina amanu wa aminus salihat. Watuasam bil haqq watuasam bis sabr. Jazakallah khair. Today we have our Islamic School of Irving End of the Year Town Hall. We welcome you all who are here present physically at the Musallah or the Masjid, or if you're watching us either on YouTube or on Zoom. Jazakallah khair for participating. As you see today, Insha'allah, the agenda is quite packed, right? And we will try to do due diligence with most of the topics. And we will have the question and answers towards the end, right? Otherwise, if we just get into one topic, it's going to be like never-ending. And we will not be able to complete everything that is there on the agenda. Definitely, we have from the school, right? Sister Laila and the administration over here. From the school advisory board, we have Brother Alabaajat, Dr. Faisal, Sheikh, Dawud. We have, I'm forgetting your name. Brother Wasif Sheikh and everybody over here. So Sister Dua is also here. Sorry, I forgot about it. Jazakallah khair, everybody. So we'll kick it off with the Quran recitation from our own.
Brother Khalid, jazakallah khair. Assalamualaikum.
A'udubillahiminasyaitan radji'm. Wa wadzina Musa falafin laila. Wa atmamnaa b'ashrin fetam miqatu rabbih arobagin laila. Wa qala Musa di akhi haron axlufni fi qomi wa a'shlhip. Wala tattabig sabil al-mufsidin. Walamma jaa Musa di miqatinna wakallamahu rabbuhu qala rabb adini anzur ilai. Qala lan tarani walaqin anzur ina jabel. Qala lan tarani walaqin anzur ina jabel. Fa'in istaqar makanahu fasufa tarani. Falamma tajalla rabbuhu nil jabel j'ahlahu dakka. Wa xarr Musa s'agqaa. Falamma afaq qala subhanak. Falamma afaq qala subhanak tubtu ilai. Wa ana anwalu mu'minin. Qala ya Musa inni asfayituka ala nazib risalati wabikalami. Fa'ud ma atayituka wa kun mina shakirin. Wa katabnaa lahu fil alwaahim in kulli sheen mowaghata. Wa tafzinana l'kulli sheen. Fa'udhaa bi quwwati. Wa amur qomaka yaxudu b'ahsaniha. Sa'udiikum dar al-fasiqin. Sa'ashrifu an ayaatiyalladzina takabbaruna fil arduh b'ghairil haqq. Wa'in yarau kull ayyat illa yu'minu bha. Wa'in yarau kull ayyat illa yu'minu bha. Wa'in yarau sabil rushdila yattaxidu sabilaa. Wa'in yarau sabil al-ghyi yattaxidu sabilaa. Zadik b'annahum kazzabu b'aayatinaa wa kanu ghanha gafirin. Waladzina kazzabu b'aayatinaa. Waliquailaakhirati habitat a'mmaluhum. Habitat a'mmaluhum hal yujzoun illa man kanu yammalun. Sadaqallahul 'azim.
Jazakallah khair, gali Takbir, Allah. We'll get going, but yes, I did mention there is administration, right? But we have the school staff, right? We have the faculty. There is a lot that goes on during the year, right? And it is very difficult to justify, to compress everything. So here, the idea is to give an overall overview of what we have been doing, what we have accomplished and what we are looking forward to do, Insha'allah. But as I said, jazakallah khair to everybody from the school, right? For putting all of this together. We'll kick it off. Yes, Sister Laila, we'll.
Okay. Assalamualaikum everyone. We're going to start, Insha'allah, with our student council president, Fatma Mariaz. She is going to introduce or remind us all of our vision, mission and values. And she has a message at the end of the year as a senior, leaving us in two weeks, Insha'allah, to communicate with everyone.
Thank you so much, Dr. Laila. So to remind everyone of the vision. Our vision is to be the Islamic School of Choice in North America, weaving academic excellence and highest morals and ethics. Our mission is to provide our children an environment where we can enable them to achieve their highest potential founded on Islamic morals, scholastic excellence and good citizenship. All right, Insha'allah. Bismillah walhamdulillah wa salaatu wa salaam ala rasulullahu ala ali wa shahbi ajmain. Assalamualaikum, rahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Fatma Mariaz. And alhamdulillah, I've been elected to serve the school body as a student council president this year. It is my privilege to stand before you today to discuss the significance of this town hall meeting. This event serves as an embodiment of the Islamic School of Irving's mission, vision and values. It highlights the integral role that student council plays in our school community. The student council at ISI serves as a voice for the student body, aligning perfectly with Islamic School of Irving's vision to nurture young minds, foster a love for learning and develop well-rounded individuals who can contribute positively to society. At its core, the student council aims to foster an inclusive environment where every student's voice is heard and valued. Whether it's planning spirit weeks, executing memorable events for the students or voicing students' concerns, the student council is dedicated to enhancing the overall students' experiences here at ISI. This year, Stuko was composed of the president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, public relations and historian. Although my officers are not here today, I would like to acknowledge each and every one of them for their hard work in this academic year of the 2022 and 2023 as it comes to an end. I'd like to start by thanking my advisor, Sister Tahmina. Although she's the homeroom for eighth grade, she's also invested so much time into helping us organize events. She's overseen all of council duties. And so I'd like to thank her. She's not here today, but I'd like to give a big thank you to her. Our vice president is Jasmine Saleem, who also holds the esteemed position of salientorian. Takbir. Masha'allah. Jasmine has demonstrated equal dedication and consistently held me accountable throughout the year. Our public relations officer, Ala Al Baal Bakki, has been responsible for email correspondence and making announcements during assemblies. Ala is a passionate individual who isn't afraid to express his opinions and serve as the voice for the student body. Abdullah Khan, our treasurer, deserves to be recognized for his valuable contributions to the council. Masha'allah, Abdullah Khan is a Hafaf who graduated from Tenzil Academy. And I'd like to also mention that three out of the six council members who have been elected this year are Hafaf, Jasmine Saleem, Abdullah Khan and myself. Alhamdulillah. I would also like to mention that Abdullah is almost rated 2,000 on chess.com, nearing the ranking of top collegiate players in the United States. Anam Sayed, our secretary, has diligently taken charge of meeting minutes and managing the bulletin board. She's the mastermind behind all the posters and all the flyers that you see here around the school. She's my right-hand person, providing unwavering support throughout the year. Lastly, but certainly not the least, Aiman Damra is our historian. He offered us a fresh perspective on the student body, documenting our journey and our preservation. Our council would not be the same without him. Insha'allah, this year, in the pursuit of inclusivity for all the students amidst the growing numbers here at ISI, we have expanded our council to add more positions so we can be more inclusive of all the new students, right? So we, student council, and our head of the school, Dr. Laila Kayed, has collaborated to edit the Stuko bylaws to fulfill the Islamic School of Irving's mission and vision. The positions that were added were parliamentary, corresponding secretary and recording secretary. And I'd like to mention that a form has been sent out to all students, all secondary students, to run for all these positions for the 2023 to 2024 academic year. These new positions demonstrate a commitment to transparency, organization and effective communication through our student council. They strengthen our ability to serve the student body and ensure that our initiatives are executed with precision and accountability. Together, we can work towards building an even stronger Islamic School of Irving where each student feels valued and empowered. Thank you for your time. It's been a pleasure to serve you as a student council president. And I look forward to all the fruitful discussions that will be here for the next hour. Assalamualaikum, warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Jazakallah khair. I can't hold both and I can't see. So this is going to be a bit of a struggle. Bismillah. I don't need a chair. I just wanted to see, but it's okay. I'm good, Insha'allah. I'm fine. It is refreshed, okay, alhamdulillah. This is, this is good? Okay, bismillah. Assalamualaikum everyone. So we have a lot to share today and we appreciate your patience and focus. So bismillah. We want to share with you the impact of ISI with numbers. Twenty-six years, what does that mean? That means, Masha'allah, we have 850 students right now. We have 240, it was 240, now it's 284 with the new graduating class. Alhamdulillah, graduated from ISI. Alhamdulillah, we have five competitive sports that we offer. Our average SAT score is 1300. We have 370 plus new devices, alhamdulillah, in the building. We serve over 500 families. Years of experience of our staff combined exceeds 500 years. I know that sounds crazy, but that's the truth. You put all our experience together, that's how many years we're worth. Alhamdulillah. We have, we are the home of the marvels of Irving. We have Stuko, our student council that just spoke to you, TTM, MIST, NHS and GHS, student leadership opportunities, and we are expanding, Insha'allah, those opportunities for next year. We have 100% graduation rate, alhamdulillah. And we have, when it comes to attrition, student, teacher, I'm sorry, not teacher, not student, teacher, teacher turnover, alhamdulillah. We only have two this year who are, you know, resigning for family reasons. So alhamdulillah, pretty stable. Look at the numbers. I'll give you a minute to look at them and then we'll go to the next slide, Insha'allah. So Brother Navid, you wanted me to stay over here, right? Is this good? Okay. So this is ISI at a glance. We are revealing a couple of things today. And I'm going to have you wait until the end. So I make sure you don't get up and leave, Insha'allah. If you look at the Islamic School of Irving, alhamdulillah, we are looking at an expansion. We are looking at improving, Insha'allah, each and every aspect of our journey together, Insha'allah. This is something you will be able to take home with you to remember. So you will be receiving a flyer on your way out of the door, Insha'allah, with a lot of information on it. Moving on, Insha'allah. Sister Kendra, you were going to present the awards, please. We have different faces today for you to interact with, so you don't get bored. Sister Kendra is our co-athletic director, Masha'allah, and she is an asset. Can you see it or should I open it up on something else? Okay. So we can't see from here the screen very clearly. That's why they're struggling? So if we can, if I can get a small table up here where we can set up our own.
I can get your chair.
Well, okay.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. My name is Kendra Montemayor. I'm the associate athletic director here at the Islamic School of Irving. And these are our academic competitions and accolades from this year, 2022, 2023. Our first is our Quran competition, the Imam Shatabi Quran competition. National two, first place international and first and second place in that competition. Alhamdulillah. We also have math counts, where we are the top team in math counts in our regional chapter. Our MIST Regional Islamic School of Irving, we placed first overall as overall winners. First place 20, second place 16 and third place 14. We have the National Merit Recommendation. Our 2024 National Merit Scholarship went to Ala Al Baal Bakki and Abdullah Khan. We also have the PSIA District with total 52 ribbons. Our first place was four, second place nine and third place four. Our PSIA State, we have a total of 13 ribbons. First place, we had two, second place three and third place one. Then we have our Science Fair, state-level Texas and Science and Engineering Fair, where we placed third, and that was Hibba Tamar, our seventh grader. And then we have our Congressional Award. And our Congressional Award Gold Medal goes to Batool Hussain, our senior who's graduating this year. So alhamdulillah. Takbir for all of those awards.
Jazakallah khair. Thank you. No, no, it's okay. So Insha'allah now, Brother Muhammad, Dr. Muhammad Al-Bajat, we'll start with the board update.
Assalamualaikum. My name is Muhammad Al-Bajat. I'm the vice president of the board. Subhanallah, we have a long waiting list on people who would like to join ISI. And definitely, we are struggling with the spaces of all the functions that we would like, we are doing or would like to do in the school. And Masha'allah, our brother in ICI, they are really helping out with the spaces. And we're going after every single room in ICI. And everybody is helping here. However, I think it's the time to think about or to expand and having a new building, which is Phase Three. So I'm going to give you a quick update in Phase Three. So this is the first floor plan. And Phase Three, it's 29,000 square footage. It's two floors. And this is the first floor. And go next slide. So the second floor also, as you notice here, it's, there is a Tenzil wing, what we call it. And this is a custom design for the demand also for the Tenzil. They need seven or eight rooms. It's on the right side of the floor plan. So as an update of the status as of now, we are about 95% in architect design. Civil engineering work, actually, we just started. We have to hire, we got to hire the same civil engineer for Waqf. And the reason for that, we wanted to align the Waqf activities with the Phase Three activities. So there will be full alignment between the two projects. This is, we just started, there's a few tasks already started, but Insha'allah, another month it should be completed. Structural design, 90%. Geotech survey completed and mechanical, electrical and plumbing work, it's about 90%. We are expecting next month or so to be really ready or by June timeframe. We are ready with all the design, ready to be submitted for the city. And we are already talking to the city and order once we get the design ready there. So they will approve it quickly. And meanwhile, because we still have a lot of demand for next year, we are thinking to add two portables in the portable area. And we need to also relocate the current portables to accommodate Phase Three location. So the engineer also working now on a design how we can line up the portables and what's the possibility to add one or two portables. Insha'allah, we are hoping by September, we're going to do groundbreaking for Phase Three.
Jazakallah khair, Brother Muhammad. Can you all hear me fine? Alhamdulillah. Jazakallah. So I'll first start with financial updates. Hopefully you can see a little bit of this. You know, this one is where, how we receive our revenue, right? This is all the money in, right? So this quarter, you can see that majority of our revenue source is really tuition, right? And if you like, you know, look at the other boxes that, you know, we have donation, we have RBM and we have some other, you know, funds and grants that we receive. So that's basically how we receive all our money. And if you look at how we expand our money, that you'll see the large portion of that really is a payroll expenses, right? And that's expected. We have a large staff and we want to make sure our teachers are well compensated, Insha'allah. And then you can see that we have extracurricular activities. RBM is pretty large here as well. We have some construction updates. We have some of the, some of the expenses for extracurricular activities, et cetera, right? So and we'll share these screens, these, you know, slideshow with you. So you probably will be able to read it properly, Insha'allah. And then if you really realize, this is basically year-over-year comparison per quarter on how revenue generation is happening, right? If you can see here that there's a tremendous growth that you can see year-over-year, right? Both quarter one, two and three. Quarter four, it's not fully done yet. So we only have minimal data, but that will be updated end of the year, right? So if you see that we actually have quite a lot of growth going on, especially from the financial aspect, and that is reflected here in this particular report. And similarly, expense-wise, we do have quite a lot of growth here as well. And there are some investment going on in terms of, you know, supporting scalability for that growth and starting on the other additional programs. So that's very high-level overview of how, you know, the financial picture look like for, for the school. Overall, we are growing, alhamdulillah. And, you know, our projection is to make sure that we have zero-based budget. At the same time, we want to make sure that we have some revenue allocated through the donations, through the grants and through, you know, some other means too, so that we can basically fund our project expansion for the Phase Three, Insha'allah. Technology infrastructure. So as we grow, we have to make sure that we invest enough within the technology, right? All the education actually is moving towards online. A lot of online supports happening, right? One of the things as we did here is that we started with getting additional devices. Like we added 100 plus new Chromebooks for the students and for the staff. We got additional update, upgraded computers for the staff. The touchscreens, we actually started with 20, I believe. The touchscreen allow the classroom education enable through more interactive and more inclusive way, right? And that's basically a first step. And, you know, I'd like to actually thank PTO, who actually generated the fund for the touchscreen so that we basically took our first step to upgrade our classes in terms of technology. We upgraded phone system. Panorama is something that we'll talk about. That's something that we are investing in terms of, in terms of, you know, really understanding data-driven, you know, education, right? You need to figure out how, what are the different trends, both from the academic perspective, behavioral perspective, et cetera. And some of that detail you will be seeing later in the, in the deck. And the Genuity is another investment that we are doing that is basically allow you to take online courses, both in the summer and also some of the AP courses, additional things like that, et cetera. Now, that was basically baseline. Then we realized that, you know, as you keep moving through the building, that there are some gaps in the internet coverage, right? So that is basically where we invested in some additional access point and infrastructure so that, you know, your internet coverage is very well, you know, planned for the, all the areas across the schools. Now, when we do that, we realize that, you know, when we have start test or other, you know, other, you know, exams going on, there are a lot of devices connecting at the same time, we were actually hitting the, hitting the peak and bandwidth limit for our internet. So we actually enhance our internet to have 10 times more bandwidth than what we had previously. And that is done, alhamdulillah, as of last week. And as we, you know, think about internet, you know, and the data and the applications, we obviously, as a parent, think about security, right? The content security, like when our student goes online, we need to make sure they're not going into the, into the places which are harmful. And we are making sure that their content is safely moderated, right? So for, because on this particular area, we are basically, we already have rolled out specific, you know, threat protections in 21 different categories for all the internets that's actually going for the, both staff and school, student wifi. But on top of that, we also have created the content filter so that, you know, you cannot, you know, student cannot go into the websites which are like, you know, 4chan.com or yikyak.com. There are so many different things that, you know, you want to preserve your students from. And also that actually makes sure that your focus is on education and not other streaming or any other, you know, social media devices, et cetera, Insha'allah. So this is basically our typical Islamic School of Irving student, right? And parents are sending student to Islamic School of Irving because of our mission. Our mission is to enable an environment that can basically provide them a balance between Islamic values and academics and create a leadership and other opportunities that can basically, you know, what I really want to do here is align our compass to our mission, right? As we grow, there can be so many different avenues that we can move, right? We want to make sure that we are aligned on our mission and values. And that's basically what the focus is here. And if you really look at, you know, double-click on Islamic values, academic, you know, sides of the, sides of the categories, it basically, you know, will show you that for academic side, we are, for Islamic value side, we have Arabic, Quran, Salaah, Islamic Studies, Serbia, Alimiyah, Guidance Counseling. There are so many different aspects that we are touching from the Islamic and moral values perspective throughout the day when the student comes in. At the same time, we want to make sure there's a scholarships excellence for the academic sides of the area. And that's where we have academic counseling, we have a spread department. Math count is where our student go and when. STEM is a focus area. Electives, AP and dual credits. MIST, we talk about. STEM is a focus area, elective, A P and dual credits, M I S T, we talk about. P S I S, Student Council, that's where, you know, you will, you know, you, you saw our Student Council President came in. And when she talked about, you know, the composition of Student Council, they actually are setting bar for us in the school board to basically reach there, right? They're doing such a tremendous work, right? So this is, this is basically the leadership aspect that we are working with. Athletics and robotics is, you know, some of the areas that we are really trying to grow. And robotics, you know, we have Brother Abeda here, we have partnership with Khan, we have Marbles of Irving. And there, there are other slides, we'll talk about robotics where within a year, we have just done tremendous, tremendous, you know, strides into this particular area. And that's basically how, you know, we want to make sure, you know, our, our, you know, different aspects of Islamic Studies, Islamic Values and Academics produce the tomorrow's leader for us. Okay. So we're in last couple of weeks, there are a few changes in the school board. This is how school board look like for, especially in terms of the voting board member. With the constitutional changes, changes that happened last week, a lot of people have questions, what are changing, right? So I just want to give you very high level overview. We have to reduce two seats, two voting seats. And fortunately, we actually have Brother Ahmed Abulastam expire earlier last month and we did not fill that seat. And then Brother Zamir also voluntarily resigned last week. So what it, what it does is that we actually were able to reduce these two seats to comply with the new amendments and I C I constitution. On top of that, there is also a requirement that four, four school board member will go for election within the 30 days. So that's basically the impact on that, you know, Brother Mohamed, me, Dr. Faisal, Brother Faisal Sheikh, we will go for a reelection within next 30 days. You as a parent will receive an email from election committee in terms of initiating how, you know, how, you know, election is going to run, et cetera, right? So look out for that. Make sure you, everyone participate because this is your, you know, you are the biggest stakeholder in the school board, you know, in the school and how the direction goes in, Insha Allah. All right. With that, I will actually hand it over to Sister Leila.
Okay, Salaam alaikum. So we are going to continue with a quick enrollment annual report. Last year, Alhamdulillah, we had, oh, this year, it already feels like last year because we're wrapping the year up, I'm sorry. This year, we have 858 students. Next year, Insha Allah, we are looking at 868 students. So the enrollment is pretty much stable right now due to space. We do have a waiting list, a waiting list, an average of 12 students per grade level schoolwide in all grade levels. So until we expand, Insha Allah, we will not be able to take in those students. So this is where we need your support, Insha Allah Ta'ala. Teacher attrition, I already mentioned that, but I'd like to go over it again. If you look at it, last year, we had 69 faculty and staff and three left. This year, Alhamdulillah, we have 79 and two have resigned for next year. And that's a pretty good turnover in an Islamic school. If you speak to other neighboring Islamic schools, they do have a problem with turnover. Alhamdulillah, this is not a problem that the Islamic School of Irving has. And that's important to note. Discipline annual report. I know there's been a lot of questions about this one. It's important to put things in perspective, in numbers. What work do we do as a discipline committee at the school? So basically with any situation, there are four steps. First of all, the infraction is evaluated. Is it level one, two or three? If it's level one, it goes back to the teacher, working with Sister Shaheenaz and Sister Zainab. If it's level two or three, then it's escalated to the discipline committee, right? So step two, we gather information. What happened? When did it happen? Why did it happen? Who saw it? And so on and so forth, right? Step three, we interview people involved and we document. And then step four, as a discipline committee, and the committee is from five to eight people, depending on the incident and depending on how many people are available. We reach a decision based on the student handbook and we communicate with families, with teachers and we follow up. Now, a quick note here, we realized that our out of school suspensions are really not working. So what did we do instead mid-year? We implemented Saturday detention after Fajr. It worked. The data is showing that it's worked. Because the parents are involved, they have to come after Fajr, drop their child off and be involved. And we will continue with that, Insha Allah. So out of school suspensions is something as a discipline committee, we are trying our best to move away from. Saturday detentions, we're loving them. I hate to put it that way, but just to get you all to laugh a little bit, very, very, very serious faces right now. Okay, Bismillah. Now, this is just a reminder, I'm not going to go over these one by one. But some of you may in your mind right now be saying, well, what is a level one, two and three? So I'm going to give you a minute to look at that and read it if you'd like. Or take a picture of it and reference it at home. Yeah, yeah, we'll share. Of course we will. It's in the handbook. It is in the handbook. But I thought this is a visual that's easy for parents, where you can pull it up on your phone. Hold on, she said a level two, what's a level two? And go through it, right? La sama Allah. Insha Allah, that never happens. Should I give it a little bit, 30 more seconds? No? No need? Okay. Insha Allah, we, so what, if you look at that, only level two and three infractions go to the D C, Discipline Committee. Level one is handled at the teacher level with Sister Shaheenaz and Sister Zainab. Okay. Discipline data. In secondary, we have 364 students. How many level two infractions did we have? We had 22. All year long, that's not too bad. That's 6% when you compare it to the number of students, right? That's not bad. How many level infraction, level three infractions did we have? One. How many students? I didn't put that in writing, but I will share. How many students did we unenroll due to the fact that their behavior was not aligning with the vision, mission and values of the school? Three. And that was because either it's a level three or continuous level twos. So some of these level twos that you see are from not, they are not from 22 students. And I thought that was important to point out. 22 infractions does not mean that that's from 22 students. It means it's probably from eight, nine. And that's important for you to know. Okay. And Insha Allah, our goal is to minimize this gap. And while we are on this topic, I would like to introduce next year's, Insha Allah, Guidance Counselor, Sister Najah. She's not prepared to talk, but she's just going to stand up so you have a visual and say Salaam alaikum. But Alhamdulillah, because we are focused on student success, we have now invested, Alhamdulillah, in a guidance counselor who will help us with managing discipline, social, emotional learning and these issues, right? Bismillah. Okay, moving on. Testing data. Over to Brother Fadl Rahman. How you feeling at the end of the testing week?
Bismillah, Walhamdulillah, wa salaatu wa salaam ala rasulillah mu'ala alihi wa sahbi ajma'in. So to give you a testing overview, we're going to first discuss the 2022 E O Cs. This is from last year. We did not present this data at the beginning of this academic year. So we wanted to share that data with everyone. And then we'll go into the STAR for this year that just finished. The 2023 graduating classes S A T, followed by P S A T for grade eight, nine, 10. We also have a little announcement about the 11th grades. And then finally, the A P program. Bismillah. So last year in English, we had a 93% pass rate for the English E O C. From the students that did not, two were rectified, one is pending. And from that group, nearly half the class achieved mastery in the E O C. Usually in the state of Texas, you're looking at about a 30% mastery. So this is actually pretty good, Masha Allah. For E O C English two, we have 100% of students who passed the E O C with about 33% mastering it. In Algebra one, 95% of students passed the E O C with 60% achieving mastery, Masha Allah. That is an excellent number. Similarly, in Biology, 69% of students mastered the Biology exam with 100% passing. And credit to our staff here, Brother Khalil and Sister Tehmina for leading those two courses, coming in on the weekends to make sure that the students were prepared and were more than ready to do well on the exams. Takbir. So this past week, we just concluded the STAR exams for the year as well as the E O Cs. We had over 600 students participate in the testing compared to 450 in the past. This was ISI's first ever digital administration of the exam. So our brother just mentioned that we had to overhaul the entire structure, not just getting the devices, but the routers, improving the bandwidth. There was a lot that went into making sure that this administration was not just possible, but it was going through smoothly. It, it was a very different in the beginning than by the end. We had a whole new system. The bandwidth improvement allowed students to come on at the same time. We noticed that when all the students were logging in initially, the entire system would slow down. And that was improved as we went on. So we're very happy for that. Alhamdulillah, kudos to Dr. Leila and the advisory board for revamping all of that. And I'd like to give special thanks to Sister Ahlam and Brother Omar Farouk for their role behind the scenes of making sure that all of that was taken care of. These are some of the people that work behind the scenes to make sure that all the, the gaps in coverage and the troubled laptops and individual pieces of technology and routers were taken care of. I do want to mention at this time that private schools in general are, are struggling to receive the same level of support and access as public schools are. Because there's a policy gap between T E A, the Texas Education Administration, Cambium, which is the testing vendor, and private schools. The gaps, one of them is that public schools receive a T S D S I D number that allows them to track those students' performance across several exams. And that is the number that is used as the registration basis for all the exams. And we as private schools are only issued a temporary I D. And T E A does not give us a T S D S I D number. So that made the registration process extremely difficult because Cambium, the vendor, does not have a process set up for the temporary I D number. They have a process for the regular T S D S I D number. So in the background, it made it very difficult to work with. And with the increase of the number of students in enrollment and the number of students taking the exams, made it a compounding factor. To give you guys an idea of when to expect your results, I'm sure many of you are excited and eager to see how your kids did. And you're probably thinking that since it was digital, you should get the results much faster. I wish that were the case, but we are dealing with the government here. And so with that, they said, E O Cs will be available to us end of May. When I say us as the school, we're going to get some preliminary data. But for families, that will be available on the portal, which as many of you know, for private schools, accessing that portal is a mystery. That should be available June 30th. But that's for E O Cs. What about your children in grades three through eight? They don't take E O Cs. That is a mystery as well. It's going to come out somewhere in August. Now, they're aiming for August 11th and 16th. But we'll see as we get there if they decide to hold up to those deadlines. The reason for that is, as you know, coming out of COVID, now that it's officially been declared over, the passing rates are something they're still discussing. So they know what they want to give generally in terms of this many questions is a pass, this many questions is not pass. But then there's the intermediate levels. And they're going to have a lengthy due process that takes place this summer to decide on where are those markers. As soon as they come into us, we'll let you know. So as I mentioned, this is general data from the state of Texas. I just want to point out that in COVID, the test results that went down, so as you can see up here, mathematics, grade three, for example, that started at 47% for meets, went down to 29%, right, during COVID. And then it started coming up 41%. You're going to see similar results or similar trends in our data as well. That COVID came, the data goes down a little bit, post-COVID, it starts to rise. So I just wanted to give you some other examples outside of school to show you the trend before we see ours. P S A T for eighth grade, they took that in the spring session. For the English and math benchmarks, you have 84%, 76% doing, meeting the benchmarks, which is exceeding the national group, which about 450,000 students took. But we don't want to just compare ourselves to the national standards. We'd like to hold ourselves to higher standards as we can. So as the data comes in for neighboring districts, we'll compare how we did with them and what areas we need to improve in as soon as that comes in. Here's the general trend, you'll see similar, as I mentioned. So the data here suggests it was pretty stable, goes down a little bit, and then we're coming back out and it's improving, Insha Allah. We will continue to improve. For spring, P S A T nine, you'll see similar, but Masha Allah, this ninth grade, 90% and 92% met for reading and math, their benchmarks. And here you see, Masha Allah, actually here, you don't see much of a dip as compared to the previous grade level and for state averages as well. This is actually holding pretty well. And so when I looked at this data compared also with the math tests, you can see that the earlier elementaries and the lower grade, and middle school in particular, middle school is the group that was particularly affected in their data results compared to high school kids on our end. The kids, and when you further go into the data, you'll see that the, the children who were studying from home as opposed to in person, the in-person results were higher than the ones that were at home. That's another trend that we noticed. P S A T 10th grade, once again exceeding national averages. We had 87 and 83% of students meet the benchmarks. And you'll see that this group... Can we go to the next slide, please? Yes, thank you. That this group of 10th grade, Masha Allah, you can see the dip is not there. As I said, for high school, Masha Allah, these kids are doing excellent overall. P S A T, holding steady. We've got some good news. We mentioned in the beginning about the National Merit Program. The official word from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation will come out in September. I'm expecting two students to receive an award. And this will be the first time in ISI history that two students will be, Insha Allah, eligible for that award. This has never happened in our history. At most, we've had one candidate and this year we'll have double. To give you an idea of how difficult it is, you have to score in the top 1% in the country to be eligible for that. And Masha Allah, this year, I'm anticipating two of our students to have reached that benchmark based on past trends and what their recent scores were. So may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, award them the scholarships that come along with that and the recognition, Insha Allah. Average S A T score, once again, that COVID trend that we mentioned, you'll see a little bit of a dip. And most recently, you'll see the increase post-COVID. And on the right side, you'll see, we have some of the data from neighboring schools, how they're performing and how we're performing most recently. We're right there with Capel, right there with South Lake, right there with Uplift North Hills. And these are some of the communities that families actually come from and enroll here as opposed to their local districts. A P exams, which we also conducted this year and wrapped up, you'll see the significant increase in exams and the number of students as well of, as well as the exam registrations. So we had 122 previously, previous year, this year, 260. So some key takeaways, we had 67% increase in student registration, 113% increase in the number of exams taken, 200% increase in the stress on the test coordinator and new policy enrollment, new policy and enrollment that sharply increased the volume of the A P exams. AP exams. It wasn't just by accident that that happened. That was geared, that was intentional. A few years back, the counselor said that APs will be more favorable for college admissions, and we made a policy to increase the GPA for that, for students who take AP courses, and we heavily marketed it, heavily advertised to students, consider the AP program, and they responded well. The AP Scholar Award will be given to students who achieve a three or higher on multiple exams, and that is something that they will be receiving in their senior year. The results for the AP exams will be published in July. There's a grand event that happens in June for the scoring. ISI has had in its history, three teachers selected for the June AP reading, we call it, and it's a very, very prestigious program. I don't know of many schools around in DFW that have had teachers go out there. When I was there for calculus, I only met one other Muslim teacher in the whole calculus program from the thousands of teachers that were there. So Masha Allah, you have the students that are capable, you have the staff that are capable, and with support from the community, we expect that Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala will accept from us our efforts. We ask Him to bless our efforts, and we ask Him to make it easy for us. And Jazakumullah Khair.
Jazakumullah Khair. So as we did mention, we have a pretty packed presentation today, just to refresh you a little bit. Going back to discipline, I do want to give you a number to go home with. 93% of our students don't have any infractions or just a level one, and really, that's nothing. So 93%. Okay, moving on to Insha Allah, the next topic, student support. Brother, if we play that, will the voice, will the sound play or not?
With this? I'll let you listen to the video first. I'll give you a quick tour of Panorama Student Success. It's a new tool that helps educators support every student using early warning and on-track indicators, intervention tracking, and easy-to-use dashboards. As educators, we come to school each day to help each student succeed, and it's critical to know as soon as a student starts to fall off track so you can take action and help them succeed. That's why Panorama syncs with your district's data systems every day, from your student information system and assessment platforms to your behavior management system. That way, you always have access to the latest information about your students without multiple logins or spreadsheets. With Panorama, you get easy-to-use indicators that show which students are on track for graduation and college and career readiness and which may be at risk. These early warning signs are based on research, and they can also be customized to your district's needs. Next, you can easily filter your dashboards to see how students compare across groups or to track the progress of your tiered interventions. Save these groups, and they'll continue to update as new data is synced into the platform. You'll also get powerful attendance dashboards to track progress against your goals, and you'll see which students are at risk of chronic absenteeism. Then dig deeper into each student's profile to see their indicators over time. Get detailed views of their grades and assessments. See their attendance patterns by day and course. Keep track of any behavioral problems and outcomes, and view their social, emotional strengths and opportunities for growth. Then take action by creating an intervention and support plan to make sure that no student slips through the cracks. Select an intervention and add detailed notes and a goal. Then easily collaborate with other educators on your MTSS or RTI support teams. Progress monitor as students move through each intervention and understand how successfully your tier one, two, or three supports are working. And best of all, our team is always here to help with professional development, training, and support. That's why Panorama is used by thousands of schools and districts across the country.
So Salaam alaikum. Why am I introducing this to you? If you look over the past couple of years, the number of students at ISI has doubled. We went from 400-something to 800-something, right? So how do we maintain quality is the question, data. So with this data, if we go to the next, oh, that is it. If we go to this slide, this is our live ISI data from this week. I want you to take that in for a second, and I want everybody to give Sister Manar a round of applause or a takbir because we're in the masjid. Takbir for Sister Manar. This is her work. This is Sister Manar's work, our student support director. What does this mean? It was very difficult to keep pulling reports and seeing how my kids, how are our students doing with behavior? How are they doing with academics? How are they doing with attendance? Right? So in one dashboard, I can tell you right now that 77% of our students are excelling in their behavior. Some of them have a report from a teacher and run rep where there's a level one disrupting class, not wearing the uniform, coming late, something like that. Attendance, 72% are excelling. And then the third data point is academics, 48% right now are excelling. So our goal is to monitor these numbers and bring them up with student support systems, and that's what we're doing. So I hope you realize how powerful this is. This is how we will maintain quality despite the number. It doesn't have to be either or. As Brother Wasuf mentioned, this is a growth mindset, Alhamdulillah. With this growth mindset at the Islamic School of Irving, this is how we're working. We're using the data, we're tracking, not weekly, this is daily, by the way. Any teacher enters a grade, a tardy, an absence, a behavior, it is directly, oh, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting the cameras over there. Hi, everyone. So I keep, you know, we can look at this daily and figure out how many are excelling? When we say excelling, that means top 77%. That's a good number. That's a very good number, Masha Allah. But then what do we do with our students who are struggling? We have 1% struggling in behavior. We have 3% struggling in attendance, and we have 14% struggling academically. Now, our goal is to improve those numbers, but even though those numbers are pretty good, Alhamdulillah, so takbir for our staff, our teachers, our administrators, and all the work they are doing to maintain these really good numbers. I'm not feeling your excitement. Should I explain again? Okay, so takbir. That's better. Okay, Bismillah. On to what's next. We also can track how many of our students are on track for graduation at a click of a button too, which is really important. And if we move, these are all just samples of how we're tracking daily. And this is showing us how many are at risk. We've already explained it, I think that's enough. I would now like to call Mr. Ilmazam as he shares some really exciting news with you today. I mean, this is news that is historical.
Can you hear me? Hello, everybody. Thank you, parents, for coming here today. Students, stakeholders, board members, it is a pleasure to be with you here during my second year as academic counselor and college career coordinator for the Islamic School of Irving. Today, I'm going to reveal to you guys the updated academic hub. But before I get there, let me present to you the Class of 2023 data profile. As you know, we have 44 graduates this year, of which 25 of them are graduating with a 4.0 or higher. 30 of those students are graduating with the seal of biliteracy. The seal of biliteracy means that the student has been proficient and excelled in Arabic as well as English. 34 of our students are graduating with the distinguished diploma, and what that means is that the student has earned at least 32 high school credits or more. 23 of those students are graduating with an honorary associate's degree, and what that means is that student has earned 30 college credits or more. Of our 44 students, 39 have been accepted to four-year universities such as UTD, UT Arlington, Baylor, and SMU. Of these students, 20 of them have received the AP Scholar Award or recognition by College Board, which as Brother Fazlur already explained, these are students that have earned at least a three or higher on three or more AP exams. And finally, 19 of our students have achieved the Hufat status. So last year, we started off with a hub pilot, and the hub pilot was more of a central website for our student academics. However, it only contained basic generic information such as how do you apply to the dual-credit program, what are our graduation requirements, and it had forms, right, and important reminders. This year, there's been a change. So not is it only myself running it, but I have a whole team of 10th grade students. We call them the Student Resource Research Team, and it's seven 10th grade students who are helping me in different areas of research in terms of scholarships, internships, volunteering opportunities, to name a few things, and they each have their own titles, right? So we have a student dedicated just for graphic design alone of the website. And this is called the ISI Hub with Brother Almazan. It'll be for college, career, and resources. It'll have a spotlight to which we will update every two weeks or maybe monthly, depending on how, we want to highlight what our students are doing at ISI. So for now, we have Batul Hussain up on the board on our spotlight for achieving the Congressional Award, right? Another thing we've added is, say you're a student and you want to know how you can achieve that, or what is the Congressional Award? Well, we have a button there that'll take you directly to the site and explains to you how you as a student can achieve this award. We also take feedback from our parents. For example, Brother Humuda came in the other day, and he suggested AP study guides. So I got on board with the team. Quickly, we started thinking of ideas of how we can provide AP study guides for our students. So we went and we researched study guides of students that have earned five, that have earned the scores of five on the AP exams, and we compiled them together as PDF versions, and you will have it for AP Human Geography, World History, et cetera, for all the subjects on the hub. Internships, camps, and webinars. On the 18th, May 18th, next week, we have a webinar free with a college admissions advisor for the University of Harvard, but we also integrated a list full of about 100 internships here in the DFW metropolitan area that our students could attend to. So the full list will be there, has the date to enroll, the website link for the students to apply. So again, we have more webinars. This is just another page. And we've also streamlined the way that our students can enter in their volunteer hours because before it was a tedious process of getting a form, a paper form, taking it to somebody, and then bringing it back to the academic counselor. So now we just integrated the volunteer form onto the hub. All they do is simply fill out the form, and they can upload either a picture, a ledger, some sort of note from whoever they were volunteering for. We want to streamline it so that our students find it easier to volunteer for these organizations. We included more organizations to volunteer at. However, we do encourage that they volunteer here onsite at ISI so that they can help build our school. We integrated a four-year editable graduation plan tracker so that they can stay on top of what courses they've done, and they basically build their own plan here at ISI. The endorsement, the endorsements are a little bit more structured and clear by including exactly which courses the student has to enroll for and take here at ISI as well as with dual credit. So for example, here we have a pre-medical endorsement in which the student completes 15 courses, of which these include like seven math courses, five science courses, and three college courses such as anatomy and college biology. We also didn't know how students could start a club. Now our students know how they can begin a club, and they can fill out this form right here. Once they do so, their club will be pictured on the hub to which other students can see how they can join that club, how can they get information, and what are the requirements for that club. So as examples up here, we have STUCO, National Honor Society, and Yearbook. We also have tutoring organizations. And finally, we had feedback so where if students have an idea, they could fill out the form, and we will take that feedback. And again, just like the AP idea, we start working on it if we feel it's something that can be productive for our students. Okay, now on to the good part, scholarships. We have a list of 700 scholarships obtained from other counselors as well as myself, compiled and verified. So we have 700 scholarships. These are external scholarships that our students can apply to. And to make it a friendly competition, we created the scholarship race. So once a student applies for the scholarship, they don't necessarily have to win the scholarship, but if they apply to it, they fill out a form, they submit it, and they get a ballot for the scholarship race. And now without further ado, I will reveal the amount of scholarship money earned by the Class of 2023, and this was mainly presidential scholarships. A presidential scholarship is full ride paid off, right? So many of our students had two or three offers, full ride, and this was for like 30 out of our 44 students, multiple, multiple full ride offers. And our combined total was, for the Class of 2023, $3,57,780 for the Class of 2023. So I'm very proud of my students, and now I'll pass it on to the athletic department.
Salaam alaikum. Okay, so today we're going to be talking about our athletic department here at the Islamic School of Irving. First, I'd like to touch on our achievements that we have for this year. So this is our first year having volleyball for our boys team and our first time having both boys and girls playing for the, in our Texas Charter School League that we compete in. So this year, our varsity boys actually excelled and went to the first round of playoffs in the league. Alhamdulillah. Our varsity girls basketball team also went to the first round of playoffs in the league. Then we have our JV girls cross-country team that won second place at the regional cross-country meet. Can't see this one. Archery, yes. Our archery, elementary, and middle school went to the state tournament in Belton, Texas. And then our last but not least achievement is our track and field, which was just a few weeks ago, and that is our state meet. We had Yusuf Gold Bel Hamidi, who won first place in the 1,600-meter run and the third, and third place in our 800-meter run, and then Abdul Azim Mohammed, who competed in the 100-meter dash. So this was also the first for them in our track and field. For this year, this is our first time having track and field in the Charter School League. Our highlights, so we had 20 teams that represented for ISI in different sports. Like I said, we introduced volleyball for boys and as well as track and field this year. We got second place in varsity, we just spoke about that. All of these we've talked about, we've double regional track champions, which is number five. We also have a perforated decal. Our athletic logo was purchased so that we can kind of brand, brand our athletic program. And then everything else we've talked about so far, you can go to the next slide. Okay, this is our team's growth. So this is the increase in number of teams. Like I said, this is our first year for volleyball. Basketball, we've increased tremendously. I think we went from having two or three teams last year to a total of five this year. Cross-country, as you see, this is Cross-country, as you see, this is our first year having that as well. Soccer, we increased. Last year, I believe we had three teams for our boys. And we've increased, we've added elementary and our girl soccer team, varsity girl soccer. Archery, we increased as well. And track and field, this is our first year with that. And then the increase in our athletes, the number of participants. So volleyball again is our first year having that. Basketball, we've increased by about fifteen participants. Cross-country, first year for that. Soccer, a tremendous increase in growth in the number of participants, as well as archery. We went from about fifty students last year to a hundred this year, which is run by Brother Mohammed Munemri. Next slide. And then this is our tentative schedule in the Texas Charter School League. This is our, these are the dates that are to come for next school, school year as far as our sports are concerned. And I think that's it for athletics. Yes, thank you. Jazakallah khair.
Takbir. As we destroy the mic. I'd like to invite Dr. Muhammad, Insha Allah, to speak about robotics and the work of the marvels of Irving with Itqan. So here you go.
Can, can we get to that slide, please? Okay, Assalamualaikum. My name is Muhammad Abaida. I'm the founder of Itqan Institute of Technology. One of our main goals is to make sure that our Muslim kids are trained for what's needed in most careers in the future. So right now, you know, like technology is taking over, artificial intelligence, you can, you can see its impact everywhere. And it's too late to start studying this stuff when you go to school. So we are starting with middle schoolers and high schoolers. And I S I, Masha Allah, has been a great partner to Itqan this year. They have a rookie team that participated in one of the first competitions. It's called first technical challenge. In this competition, they build like a real-world robot, you know, like a forty pounds of material, aluminum, and electronics and stuff. Alhamdulillah, they were the top team in their league. And they organized here, I S I helped organizing here the league, the championship of that league, and invited about forty teams to compete here in, in a great celebration. Alhamdulillah, the marvels of Irving also qualified to the North Texas Regionals and they were finalists in one of the awards, which is a great accomplishment for this rookie team. They received in order to, you know, like, after receiving all, you know, like, doing great in this competition, they received multiple recognitions from the city of Irving, from the Texas State Representatives. And alhamdulillah, this, you know, like two years ago when we started this effort, it was very hard for Muslims to join any robotics team. You know, like the most, most robotics teams were dominated by, you know, like, certain groups that didn't allow Muslims, you know, like to go into this area. Alhamdulillah, with the help of the leadership in I S I, this year, out of one hundred and seventy teams in North Texas, forty teams made it to the regionals. Alhamdulillah, we had eight Muslim teams. Seven of them made it to the regionals. So like every one of four, four teams in the regionals were Muslims, twenty-five percent. We, this is, you know, like an unprecedented accomplishment and enabled us, alhamdulillah, to practice our religion in public in this kind of important championship. So for the first time, we prayed Zohr in congregation, Asr in congregation during the competition in front of everyone. When our Muslims excel in this kind of competitions and they practice their religion that, you know, like solidifies their Islamic identity. And when they are recognized by all these politicians and they know in their mind, oh, we are receiving this recognition because of the support that the Islamic school is providing us. You know, like we wouldn't have accomplished this if it's not the support that we received from our Muslim community. Then they start to hold, you know, like to their Islamic identity and understand that the most valuable asset they have in this life is being a Muslim. So alhamdulillah, this year we have, we've even, you know, like on top of all the awards that we got in F T C, we formed the first Muslim robotics team that participate in the highest level of the competitions. In this level, they build like a robot that's hundred and twenty pounds. They use all sorts of A Is and robotics becomes an actual sport. So not only we went, you know, like to the Texas championship and win it, we advanced all the way to world championship. And alhamdulillah, our rookie team, which has multiple students from I S I here, got the top two awards over there back, back home, which, which gave, you know, like, alhamdulillah, a very positive impact about the capabilities of our Muslim students and what we can do, Insha Allah, together as a Muslim ummah. Just, jazakum. So we're looking forward, Insha Allah, to expanding the number of teams, to having more collaboration with I S I in the next year, Insha Allah, and we'll keep you posted. Jazakumullah.
I'd like to call the board members to recognize Dr. Muhammad, please. If you could. For Dr. Muhammad. Dr. Muhammad, this is a token of appreciation from I S I, please. Is somebody taking a picture? Hold on, hold on, brothers, hold on. They're running out of here. Hold on. And then who's the next one? We have Dr. Dr. Muhammad, we have more. We're not done yet. I'd like to call Dr. Raed Sabat for all his support this year to make our work visible, alhamdulillah, with the city of Irving. So, Bismillah. I will hand it to you, brother. Yes, please.
Assalamualaikum. Jazakallah khair, Dr. Muhammad. Actually, the first time he approached the board probably a year ago. And he came with this idea about the robotics. And I thought he just wanted to say something and, you know, just get some fun or something like that. But honestly, when he came the first time, he came with the full detailed plan, what he would like to do, what he's want to achieve. And what's more amazing, when he starts implementing what he has written in that plan and the, the amount of time and efforts. And I know what he's doing and, and he's a professional. He spends a lot of time in the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, and most of the time in the, during the week in order to achieve the, what, what we already achieved altogether. And jazakumullah khair for all the volunteers and the coaches from the parent's side as well. And his idea was based on, yes, we need a student to come to robotics. However, we need the parents to be involved in, as a coaches. And that was the main idea. And I was telling him, we can hire someone and be him and help us. He said, no, the idea is really to get the parents involved in, in this active role. And alhamdulillah, it's working and it's, it's providing achievement. And we see a lot of, a lot of achievement happening for, for our team. Insha Allah, we'll continue. Jazakallah khair.
I also want to thank Brother Qutayba. He is our head coach here at the Islamic School of Irving for the marvels of Irving. So jazakumullah khair, Brother Qutayba. We have in our end-of-year graduation, which is two weeks away, we will, Insha Allah, invite all the coaches there to be recognized in front of our parents by Iddinallah ta'ala. But I did want to give you a shout out and jazakallah khair. I mean, these are, these brothers are volunteering. It's nothing in return, but the content and pleasing Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So moving on, this was a heated debate during Ramadan. Subhanallah. I've never seen a poll with so many parents answer it. Four hundred and forty-four answers, four hundred and forty-four. Whereas I sent out the parent survey, I got twenty-nine. Subhanallah. So four hundred and forty-four, you are passionate about this. So data point, before we go into the poll. So I have two data points, not one. The first one is a hundred and two students had three-plus tardies in Ramadan. That means our Ramadan schedule is not working. Okay, so we polled the parents to make sure everyone has a voice. And the vote goes from seven-thirty to one o'clock. Takbir, ladies, we can go home and cook. Okay, so. I do want to mention, for those of you who are upset about this, it's only twelve days because you have spring day, can we, spring break, and we give a break at the end of Ramadan for the last ten nights in Eid. You can do this. It's twelve days. Okay? And then with four, four hundred and forty-four responses, where did they come from? Majority of votes were fifty percent, close to fifty percent of the votes were parents. And then the next, you know, biggest vote stakeholder was students. So you decided, alhamdulillah. So next year, it will be seven-thirty to one o'clock. That was one of the reveals today. It's out of the way, done, alhamdulillah. Okay, next. We're coming to the end of our town hall today and gonna open it up for questions and answers in a little bit. But if we go back and look at the work of our P T O, Sister Dua is not here only because it is her daughter's graduation today at S M U. Or she would have been here as usual. And we did want to call her up and recognize her for all the work, Masha Allah, the P T O team has done and continues to do. So alhamdulillah, they make our school what it is. They purchased the screens, they helped with so many events, donated and supported a lot of our initiatives. And their, their work aligns with the vision and mission. Not only that, they made our vision and mission visible. You can now see, see it from the parking lot. You couldn't see it before. You can now see the vision and vision from the parking lot. And people were thinking it was new. I was like, no, no, this isn't new. It's new to you, but it's not new. This is our vision and this is our mission. So people became aware, our parents and our students and our visitors became very aware of our vision and mission. So alhamdulillah, this is all thanks to our wonderful parent-teacher organization. So in the ending, I'm taking this quote from one of our parents. What makes a great school is a mission, a vision, staff, teachers, parents, students, volunteers, college alumni, school board, leadership, admin, P T O, all of the above. It's all of the above at I S I, alhamdulillah. We are extremely blessed to be here. The picture you see there in the background is our teachers at a retreat that, alhamdulillah, Sister Shehna's got funded by Region Ten. So takbir for Sister Shehna's on that. So each and every one of us got to get professional development for three days. And alhamdulillah, it was a retreat. We connected, we learned. We came back with a different lens, with clarity. So alhamdulillah, Rabbil Aamiin. So the trifolds, do we have the trifolds, Sister Tanziel? No? Oh, so you know what? We'll give them out during dismissal because you have to see those. But you've already seen everything on here, but this trifold is for you to be mindful of why you are coming to, or be reminded, I'm sorry, of why you're here at I S I and why it's such a great, a great place to be. Alhamdulillah. So we had some technical difficulties printing today. And that's why the trifold is not ready. I apologize. Okay. And that is, that is the Islamic School of Irving. We now. The website, Insha Allah, the new website. This is the new website reveal. It will be launched, Insha Allah, tonight. We will send a message and an email for you to click on it and look at it. Some of you asked about where is the academic hub? The academic hub is private to the Islamic School of Irving parents, high school parents. But if you are a parent, you will have access to it, Insha Allah ta'ala. Or actually, it's private to our students, right, Mr. Almazan? And we were debating whether to, I think we should share for a while. We're thinking about it. Okay. Bismillah. We will go ahead and open it up. I'm sorry.
Brother Faisal, you can talk about financial aid. We have one small section that we missed earlier and I'd like to give a chance to Dr. Faisal to talk about financial aid program.
Assalamualaikum, rahmatullahi wa rukatuh. So as you know, this is the Islamic School of Irving, alhamdulillah. So as we, it's a private school, but we also have, alhamdulillah, we don't exclude any, any student. So families who cannot afford the tuition or the tuition, alhamdulillah, compared to other private schools is not high, alhamdulillah, very competitive. But want to tell you, alhamdulillah, I will want to thank the community supporting our students in all aspects. But mainly, we have average, on average, we have about fifty-five to seventy students every year. I expect the number to go higher as, Insha Allah, when we go for expansion. So first, I want to thank you, the whole community, to help in that and that. And want more support, Insha Allah, as we, we are growing. I want to thank the fundraising committee, Sheikh Hassan, Masha Allah, and all the volunteers. As you see, the donation, one of the big part in our school. So there, there will be a financial aid application available, Insha Allah. So for the, for the community, please continue, support this cause. The financial committee is anonymous. Even board members, most of them, they don't know who are they. But alhamdulillah, they put hours and hours of, of help. So again, back to the community, please support this cause and thank you very much.
I did want to highlight two, I'm sorry. I, I just, I'm gonna close with one thing, Insha Allah, that because I was gonna do it with the trifold, but alhamdulillah, the trifolds are not here, trifolds are not here. It's okay, we'll adapt. It's fine. We had two events this year that, alhamdulillah, were very successful. And it's only right to thank the people who worked so hard to make this successful. We had our trip to Al-Andalus, Spain, to learn about the Islamic history, mostly for our juniors and seniors. And then we also had a Umrah trip for our I S I families and seventy-nine people participated. And alhamdulillah, it was a beautiful experience with Doctor, with Brother Abdullah Udrum. But I do want to thank here today Brother Isam Abdullah. He was not able to attend, but his wife, Sister Munna Halabi, if she could come here and we could recognize her. Masha Allah, each and every detail throughout those trips was thought, thought through. The halal food, the comfortable transportation, and, you know, for so takbir for Brother Isam and Sister Munna. We just wanted to thank you for making that. So no pictures for us? Hold on. Let's get a picture over here. One of the ladies here has a picture, Sister Anita. It takes ladies a while to take, get the right picture, right? Okay, so alhamdulillah. Again, we will email you and text you about the website reveal tonight, Insha Allah. A lot of work has gone into this and there is one person I really want to thank for the trifolds, for the website, for the presentation today, for the work, for the data. And that is Sister Tanziel. Jazakallah khair, Sister Tanziel. She always works in the background. Nobody knows, but it is her work. So jazakallah, it's only right to say jazakallah khair. Thank you, Sister Tanziel. So questions in? I would like to invite the board members so we can take any questions that our audience, our parents, stakeholders may have. Yes, Sister Sulafa.
Assalamualaikum. I don't have a question. I just have a big comment to make that I think all of us as parents recognize that none of this data, none of these successes would take place unless we had the spiritual and emotional support that the staff gives. And I know personally how much care and love and warmth that my children get. And I just wanted to say jazakallah khair. And I just wanted to say Jazakallah Khair.
Thanks, Sister. That was heartfelt, Jazakum La Khair. Dr. Raed, please. If you could, while you're asking a question or making a comment, I'm not sure what it is, if you want to talk about, you know, the work you did with the Marvels.
Salaam alaikum, bismillah. Jazakallah Khairan. Once again, the work of the Marvels, I don't know, I don't deserve this recognition. Really the work of Dr. Abayda, Coach Hassan, Brother Quotiba, Brother Aslam, Brother Shafi, Brother Walid, and everybody who read, Muhammad Farisq and others, who put the time and effort to make it. One thing is very easy to really sell those programs when it's successful to our government agencies. Right now, I actually get calls from mayors, Mayor of Arlington, Mayor of Carlton, and ask me to come to their city to bring those programs. The mayors are calling me. I don't even go to them to ask them to do something for them. They come and they call me, Brother Raed, can you do this for us? Can you do this for us? Please, can you approach this? This is the impact that this kind of success can take into different committees and different places. In the city of Irving, I also, I was thanked by the city and the mayor and everybody about bringing all this together. So those, those things go a lot, a long, long ways when we do the right things, Insha Allah. Number, my question, Insha Allah, or comment, couple of things. As we see, we have the constitution updates last week and there is some effects on the school. Can you just talk about those changes and how it will make sure that the continuity of the success can stay? Number one. Number two is how can we get more parents involved? I know it's either food or controversy. So one of the two, either bring the food or controversy for next time, Insha Allah. So bring a vote to vote or bring food, biryani, people will come. Number three, Insha Allah, is to look at testing. Uh, I know we're all, I know Brother Faisal, this is his full-time job, but we can give him other jobs. If we look at other schools, Koppel, Plano, private schools are going away from starting other testing. Is it something we're looking at for the future or not? Jazakum La Khair.
Salaam alaikum, jazakallah khair. I'll just try to recap those three questions, right? The third one is for Sister Laila. This is about testing. Going backwards, the food, I think it's an easy answer. Yes, Brother Raed, we'll do the food and bring the community together, right? No controversies. On the first one, the question was, what impact does the amendment have on the board, right? I think Brother Wasif walked that through, maybe you missed it. So what the amendments are doing is, Insha Allah, they're making the parents the stakeholders to elect the board, right? That's what is happening. Uh, and yes, of course, there is some changes, like the number of board members is going down from 11 to nine, but that's fine, right? So the key one is, parents are going to be the key stakeholders to elect the board members. And there are going to be four board positions, right? Based on where we are, that are going to be available and up for elections again. So Insha Allah. Does that answer the questions? Jazakallah Khair. And the third one, I'll give it to Sister Laila on testing.
So testing, I agree with you. But we are a community that is very academic driven, and we want to see the numbers, to trust that we are successful. Um, this is a conversation that I will take back to the leadership team. We will talk about it. How can we minimize the amount of tests and replace it with project learning, for instance? And are there other data points we can use to show student success? I absolutely agree with you. Yes, Insha Allah. Next question? I saw the brother had his hand over the...
Salaam alaikum. There's a question online from ISI Parents WhatsApp group. The question is, will the tuition cost be impacted next year due to expansion, et cetera? So for the next year admission, we already have...
Tuition is already, table has been published.
It's already published. So you know, you can see that on the website and Insha Allah, you know, for the future, we don't know yet, but at least for the next year, the tuition has already been published since December, I believe. Jazakallah Khair.
Salaam alaikum. So I'd like to first thanks and appreciate to all teachers, staff and board member for your very dedicated and hard work for our kids to build their life. So my couple, I have a couple of questions and requests also. So first of all things, I don't see a lot of homework to students. So can you guys, you know, increase the homework? That way, you know, students have a lot of times, like almost six hour at home. So if they have a homework, then they can, you know, spend some time. And that is my request. And also definitely quality homework. Second one is exam. Is it possible to take more exam at his class?
Okay, Brother, Jazakallah Khair. Yes. I'm sorry? Seventh grade, okay. More homework and more exams? Okay. Uh, just for seventh grade? Okay, for seventh grade. I'm joking. So um, the amount of homework should be to master a skill, right? Um, it shouldn't be just because they need to drill it and we don't need to kill them doing that. So I do not agree with increasing the amount of homework. Um, a better use of their time might be to read, to exercise, to memorize Quran, to, there are so many other things they can do, research. I mean, our 10th graders, they put in the time with Mr. Almazan. They did all the research that we educators have been thinking about doing for years. So what we need to do then is empower them with projects, not homework. Homework is just, what it will do is demotivate our students. We want our students to want to come to school. Increase the amounts of exams, people are moving away from that. Exams don't measure, um, a student from our perspective, a whole human being in alignment with our vision and mission. We want a learner and a leader. Giving them exams is not going to give you that. They have to have projects, they have to have activities that they're involved in for student leadership. They have to have home economics and electives that we added this year, right? So I appreciate your question because what you are looking for is academic excellence, and I appreciate that. But I think we need to relearn, what are the markers and what are the indicators of academic excellence? Our graduate class is telling a story saying that our kids are okay. They're more than okay, Alhamdulillah, Rabbal A'lemin. Can we do better, better? Of course we can. Of course we can. And each cohort is different and has their different, their different challenges, right? So I thank you for the question and respectfully disagree. But I will increase the amount of projects. That's what we need and that's what we've been trying to work on, Insha Allah.
I don't know who did it first. You, Brother Luthman, I'll come to you, Insha Allah.
Salaam alaikum. Jazakallah Khair, Sister Laila and to your staff and to all the leadership here. Jazakumallah Khair. Wonderful programs, Masha Allah. I just had one question on academic policy regarding AP courses because I heard differing messages about it. I heard that the AP grade will be decided by the AP exam, not by the coursework? Or it'll be strictly by the classwork and the projects and the schoolwork and the exam here? Okay, all right, that'd be great. Jazakallah. That was the one question. Then another comment on the Ramadan timing was that, you know, I saw 7:30, but you know, for the older kids that we are trying to encourage to attend Qiyam and at the Hajj, especially last 10 days and all this Taraweeh, especially is, you know, I don't know, I just feel like it'll be difficult for them to attend Taraweeh till 11:30 or 12. And then sometimes they too, you know, late Qiyam and all this stuff and then still come at 7:30. So I just want to see how you can address that. Jazakallah Khair for you.
So both it's you or it's Salmazan?
So it's AP and Ramadan, right? I'll start with the easy one, Ramadan. So for Ramadan, we only have 12 days and they're kind of in the middle, right? Your first week, you have spring break, you're off. They can go to Qiyam every night. And then 12 days at school, they will have to come to school at 7:30. Why 7:30? We looked at the, you know, the calendar and the time for Salaah next year. Fajr makes it then at 6:00 AM. So they're gonna be up anyway. So they can get up and pray Qiyam at 5 and be here at 7. So it's a matter of organizing their time. We've already tried 9 o'clock, it didn't work. Teachers were coming early and waiting for students to arrive at 9:30, 9:45. It just was not working. Not only that, with the shift in time, we are not only student centered, but I am also teacher centered. Our teachers need to get home and our teachers live all over. Some of them drive an hour. They need to get home and prepare iftar for their families. So if they're leaving here 4, 4:30, when are they gonna get home? And again, the majority vote was for the parents and the students, not teachers. And they voted 7:30. So it's only 12 days, I think we can handle this, Insha Allah Ta'ala. Now back to the AP. For them to receive the AP, wait. Brother Fadlur, you can come up here and elaborate if you'd like. For them to receive the AP, wait in their GPA, they have to take the AP exam. If they don't take the AP exam, it does not impact their grade. It impacts the wait and it becomes an honors class. But I'll give it over to Brother Fadlur Rahman to comment on that.
Bismillah. So for the AP exam, which took place in the last two weeks, that exam will potentially offer students the opportunity to earn college credit. That exam is scored in June by ETS, the Educational Testing Service, which is in collaboration with College Board. The AP course for high school credit is done internally with the school. So students, whatever coursework they've been doing, will get the AP credit for their high school transcript. The AP exam is from College Board and scored by ETS, which takes place in June and is then published in July. When students receive their score reports in July, they can forward that score report, if they choose, to colleges to earn college credit for that course. And each college has their own requirement for what is the minimum score that they will accept to award college credit. Sometimes it gets a little nuanced where a college will accept the course credit or award them the advanced placement credit for general admissions. But for certain programs, that program will mandate that, no, if you took bio and you got a five, we'll give you general credit. If you're doing biology at our school, we still want you to take our biology. But if you're major with something else, then we'll give you the biology credit. And that's how they typically proceed. Uh, I did make a PDF document with the local schools and what was the minimum AP score that they required for acceptance. If you don't have access to that, send me an email and I'll forward that document to you. Does that answer the question, Insha Allah? Yes. From the school, yes.
It does not impact the weight.
Right, exactly.
Salaam alaikum. Just had another concern about the Ramadan timing again. So my concern is more of the less two hours of school instruction, so... Okay, so that's 12 days times two, so that's 24 hours of just less school instruction. So my question is, how does that compare to like the rest of the district of like, let's say, overall year hours of school instruction? Are they getting less of instruction? Okay, so it's already worked, okay. That was just one concern of mine. And then the other is just about the security of the school. So I know we said we have two security officers. Are there any, I'm sorry, armed and trained? Nope, I know that. I'm asking, is there any plans for adding even more in the following years? Again, just based on just overall what's been happening at schools.
Um, so Bismillah. We have two armed security officers at school and we also have Sister Brenda, who is an undercover security officer, by the way. Um, so we have trained staff, on staff, if that makes any sense. But to answer your question, um, we have applied for a grant, a security grant, and we're waiting on a response, Insha Allah. It's a government grant. And with that grant, we will be able to do a lot. Our focus right now is fencing and safeguarding the facility rather than adding, um, security officers. That for us would have a better impact. And this comes from the security and safety assessment that we had done, not us. We had somebody come in and do it, so we qualified for the grant. And they said that would be our number one priority is defending the facility. Um, we were going to discuss that today, but honestly, I'm waiting for the response from the grant and then Insha Allah, we'll have a reveal of what we're going to do. But we do have a plan in place. And this plan is based on as an assessment from an outside, you know, resource so that we can qualify for the grant. So we are working on it. A lot of work has been done and we continue to work to improve that, Insha Allah Ta'ala. But know that we do have systems in place and we do have a policy in place and protocols in place. God forbid if we would need them. Insha Allah, we don't. Did I answer both your questions? That was all, right?
Salaam alaikum. I just want to add one thing to the security program. Like, you know, the assessment Sister Laila mentioned was actually done by Department of Homeland Security. They have a SEAL program. They came here in February. They went and checked entire school premises, including external, external, internal, ICI, everywhere. And they actually have created a huge report with certain action items. And that's basically what our plan is to look at those action items and potentially use the grants that we have applied. If we can get it, Insha Allah, you know, we'll use that to prioritize those action items. But regardless of if we do not get the grant, we will still make the security a priority and that's something we definitely want to make sure it's work, especially with the phase three expansion going on and whatever the incidents going on. That is something we definitely want to focus. Jazakallah Khair.
This might be related to security. So I know Brother Khalid, you raised the hand first, right? So the question was, when are we expecting the wall between the pre-K3 and Wakf to come up? Brother Al-Wajad, do we have a timing for that? Again, related to security for kids.
Yeah, this is an issue actually within Construction Committee. I think Brother Hussam was here, but, oh, he's not here. So we talked to the, we talked to our brothers from the Wakf side and they're supposed to put the fence back. And there is some activities going on by Samar, which is basically relocating the portables. And right after that, we should see something which is permanent in terms of the separation and protection, the portable area from the Wakf side.
So when the kids come back after the summer, the wall should be there? That's the idea?
Um, it's not, it's not decided yet, but it depends how fast we're gonna do the relocation of the portables and what's other infrastructure work they need to do to, from the Wakf side and to decide what's the appropriate time to put the, to put the permanent wall. But the fence always there.
Jazakallah Khair. Salaam alaikum. First of all, I would like to appreciate Dr. Laila and teacher, staff and leadership for all the good works. The, seeing the statistics is really, very promising. Uh, as a parent of four kids in the school enrolling first time in this semester, I feel very, very confident, pleased to see the statistics. However, I would like to address one probably very separate topic that discussed so far, the cleanliness about the school. What I want to say, my kids coming here from a separate state into, in this school, they were constantly complaining about the cleanliness in the class, in the bathroom, lies. Actually, thank you, Dr. Laila, that you addressed the lies issue recently. But to be honest, my kids were complaining from the beginning of the semester. They face this lies issue in their hair. So yeah, please, bugs, flies and all these things, classroom. I think cleanliness is very important. I would like to hear something, thanks.
Cleanliness. So um, we have a cleaning crew, literally 24/7. And Masha Allah, Sylvia, she does a really good job of directing this crew and cleaning. Now, the amount of traffic that we have in this building, as you... Now, the amount of traffic that we have in this building, as you can see, it doesn't stop. So we are doing our best, but honestly, cleanliness needs to come from each and every one of us. Cleanliness comes from the home. So I hear you about the lice incident. I don't think this was the place to mention it, but Jazakallah Khair, it's okay, we're transparent. Lice has nothing to do with cleanliness. That is a misconception, by the way, and I am so sorry to say this. And due to these notions and ideas that we have, unknowingly, we are hurting our youth by the comments that we made, because some of our students were really upset by some of the comments that were made. Subhanallah. So Jazakallah Khair for the comment. I agree with you. Cleanliness is a concern to a certain extent, but it comes from the home. We are trying our best. But again, cleanliness comes from the home, from the home. So let's work on that, Insha Allah Ta'ala. Well, I can send reminders for home. Let's set the time for, I don't know, Fridays, Tuesdays, and Sundays for parents to remember to check your child's bookbag, make sure they've had a shower, make sure you've washed their uniform. This comes from the home. This comes from the home. But maybe we need to have an awareness campaign. I don't think it's to that point, but yes, it comes from the home. So Jazakallah Khair.
Salaam alaikum. Jazakallah Khair. As a parent, I feel indebted to the entire community of ISI teachers and also administrations. So Jazakumullah Khairan. My first question is, I want to know about, I came in late, so I apologize on that, but what is the student-teacher ratio, number one? Number two, let's say if a child is falling behind on his assigned grade level or vice versa, if he's excelling better than his assigned grade level, what does ISI do on that? If they're falling behind or exceeding?
So two very important questions. Let me make sure I remember them. The first one was? Student-teacher ratio. So I'll go over them. Bismillah. Daycare, we have a totally separate ratio, but we have two adults to, don't quote me on this, two adults to at least twelve babies, right? Eighteen months to two years. And it depends again on how many. If we need more, we have somebody to come in to complete the ratio, right? Pre-K three, it is eighteen to two, so the ratio is one to nine. Pre-K four, it is twenty-four to two, so it's twelve to one. Kindergarten, it's the same thing, twelve to one. First grade, it is twenty-four to one. We do have a floating teacher assistant, and that is the case for first, third, and fourth. For second grade, we don't have a floating assistant, because it's one to twenty-two, which is a normal ratio, right? Now, we get into high school, the ratio is twenty-four to one in core subjects. In Quran and Arabic, the ratio is from twelve to sixteen to eighteen to one, depending on the level. In some of our classes, we have six to one. So it depends on the level, right? Like, there is a class in sixth grade where the ratio in Quran is six to one, because we had students who didn't even know how to read the alphabet. So, does that make sense? Where we see a need, we make sure that the ratio is appropriate. How else can I answer it? So does that clarify? Does that answer your question? So the ratio depends on the age, and it depends on what is the subject. So for Arabic and Quran, it is less, of course. For the lower elementary, it's less, but it's between twenty-two to twenty-four to one. Okay? Insha Allah. Now, will that be increasing next year? Possibly, twenty-four to twenty-six to one in middle and high. So two, not in all grade levels and some. Your second question was, those who are doing well and those who are not doing well. Okay. So as you know, we established the student support department this year. When we say established, that's what you saw today, panorama, where now we can track daily, because of the record system and our Masha Allah and her team, we can track daily behavior, academics, and attendance. That's where it begins. If those three markers are off, you know that the child needs help. So what we are doing is, we are setting up the expectation that with Sister Manar's help, her team's help, those who need help are being pulled out and supported, and that's happening. Those who are excelling, I believe we can improve there. I do think that's an area for improvement. We do offer the AP rigorously, and we have increased the number of AP courses for our high school students. We have increased the opportunity for our Hufad, where we have a certain level for them, and they get to review for them alone. So there are pockets of where we've been successful, but we can absolutely address it in a better manner, Insha Allah. As the student support department continues to grow, because this was our launching year, right? So next year, Insha Allah, you will see more focus on gifted and talented students, Insha Allah Ta'ala. That is, we were so focused on making sure that our students who need support get that support that I can regretfully say that gifted and talented was none of focus this year. But Insha Allah, it wasn't Quran, but not in all core subjects, and that is absolutely an area for improvement. Jazakallah Khair for bringing it up. Wa iyyakum. Yes, Dr. Fader Ayed? That's exactly what we're doing. We've already done that. Support staff has been scaled up. Yes. No, no, Sister Manar. So we've gone up, mhm. No, the staff went up from sixty-nine to seventy-nine. From last, in one year, staff increased from sixty-nine to seventy-nine. Support staff, four of them are support staff. And admin, we did increase. We have, we have, Masha Allah, Sister Najah as a guidance counselor joining us. And so, is there room for improvement? Yes. But I'll be honest with you as head of school, if you do allow me, Brother Navid. We are making sacrifices to expand, because it is no longer an option to send our children to public school.
Jazakallah Khair. One last question. This is on the ISI parents. With the new constitution changes, how can we make sure we do not get into another instability to our school leadership, like what happened few years back, where we lost twenty-plus staff members a month before the school started, right? So, good question. Insha Allah, what we are doing and what we continue to do, and there is always chances for improvement, right, is have processes, procedures, and policies in place, right, to ensure that anything related to masjid does not impact as much, right, into the school? And that's the question, I think, that we are asking, right? And then also make sure that there is transparency, right? What is happening at school is there back to the masjid. And whether you like it or not, the person standing in front of you, that's one of the main responsibilities handed over to me. And Insha Allah, make Dua that we will do that. But yes, absolutely. I think everybody understands, right? The most important thing in the school, I know we talk about parents, we talk about teachers, but everything comes from the students. And if there is any instability in any of the areas, the biggest impact is on the students. And Insha Allah, we do not want that to happen, Insha Allah. Jazakallah Khair. Brother, we'll go for.
Salaam alaikum. Subhanallah. I think Brother Navid is scared. I have so many complaints to make. I don't even know where to start. No, it's not a complaint, it's actually compliment. Subhanallah. What, when I go back and look, when we had the four hundred students, now we have eight hundreds, it doesn't just change overnight. It takes a lot of effort. When Sister Leila came onboard, everybody is talking, even myself, I'm thinking, why we do need, we have principal, why we need head of the school? Where did it came from? Did any school has anything like that, head of the school or principal? I never, you know. No, you know, so changes is always good. Subhanallah, that effort that turns around from that, where we were losing students that time, and they're coming, the sincerity, the activeness, even on your off time, even on your night that you call if anything happens, three in the morning, I can witness that, that your concern, it's like every single kid, like you treat them like your own kid, no kids leave behind. That action, that motion, and that Nia that you had, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala's help came, and we came all together to this end, that we have so many kids online waiting to be enrolled. So Jazakumullah Khair for everybody doing this, and especially if Sister Leila coming onboard and making this effort and making it happen with everybody's together and bringing together everybody. Jazakumullah Khair.
Jazakallah Khair, Brother Mamun. I know we are up with time. I would just like to add one thing, because it looked very personal when I talked about the previous question. Masha Allah, the team on all sides, right? I don't want to say both sides, because it sounds very weird. On all sides, from the ICI, Shura body, Shura council, right? The excellent board members we have, the leadership, the faculty, all are working, Insha Allah, Alhamdulillah, together to be united, right? We are united, and we have to continue to be more united as we go along, Insha Allah. Brother Musa, you're waiting for like... You don't want us to go home?
But I'm sorry. I raised my hand. I guess like I gave the preference to others. First of all, Jazakallah Khairan for all the wonderful work. In fact, I thought like I may say my question, but since there is one brother, he mentioned a similar question in the other side, basically regarding homework. It's opposite to me and a few other brothers we just discussed before the meeting. So we feel like kind of the students seems got quite a lot of homework, especially on middle or the end of final time. What happens is that for right now, in the last two weeks, so all the final projects coming, maybe like four, five, or even six, now each one has quite a decent requirement. I mean, it's good, because teachers want like students get trained, get high quality. But the thing is, you have only two weeks, or in the middle is also. So the students kind of a lot of times, maybe for a few days or a couple of weeks, they are sleeping very late. So I'm thinking like, what's a good way like really to reduce the load of the student? One thing is like, and this is just thinking like, can the teacher thinking about when you give project, you consider that the other teacher, your peer, is also giving project at the same time? So try to maybe give maybe only fifty percent of your requirement. Another thing is like, can we like distribute the load, not only say in the middle, so all the product coming, or in the last two weeks? Some, some subject, can we like to make the final project in the middle or four weeks before? That's my thinking. Yeah. Jazakallah Khair. Salaam.
So those were, any answers or these are suggestions? You have some answers?
Well, I can answer, but... No, I wanna, I wanna just comment if you don't mind. So Subhanallah, with the high school, I agree with you. They are not sleeping enough, and they are under a lot of stress. I agree with you. But let's be mindful that they just came out of their AP exams. I can see it, they're exhausted. I agree with you. The thinking behind the projects came because we don't want to have final exams twice. And to be very honest with you, it was also a behavior intervention. So rather than have them have nothing to do after testing, we thought, let them do some projects, embed that learning, and make them busy. Because if they're not busy, they're gonna make us busy. So if that makes any sense, you know? So we're trying to occupy and engage, that's at the middle school level. For high school, I hear you, it is a lot. I will take this back to the staff and faculty, many of them, Masha Allah, here. Sister Shaheenaz is here, Sister Anita, Sister Brenda, I see many of Sister Kendra, I see our staff here. They are listening and they are hearing you, and Insha Allah, Sister Shaheenaz and Sister Zainab, maybe they could coordinate something with the teachers to make sure that this comment and this concern is heard, that our students are very stressed at this moment. So maybe we can coordinate that. Sisters have some questions. We have a brother, and then the sisters haven't asked any questions, so we're gonna go to them next.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Thank you. I know we all want to go. Just quick, a comment. I'm really, really impressed. It's unprecedented, Dr. Leila and her team, what they're doing to the school. Coming from my background, coming from back in, from London, UK, the education system and how, and what, and why, and what they do, I'm really, really guts-macked how you guys, you know, Barakallah Fiqum for taking care of our children and in general, taking care of everyone's needs. And I'm, question, sometimes I see a WhatsApp group, some of the teachers responding, especially Dr. Leila, one PM, two PM, three AM. I was like, what time does she sleep? When, you know, she does all this? And especially with the event that happened recently regarding the shooting and how she handled Barakallah Fiqum. Really, really pleased. Just two more points, if you don't mind, coming from, again, from back in the UK and in the British system, there's more on PE, educational, like physical educational. I understand Brother Mohammed, recently, he was doing a lot of activities like soccer, football, basketball. And our children in general, they are very, very weak. They could not even run, some of the girls, some of the boys. So is there a way we can implement next year's schedule, like math, science, English, and PE as part of the curriculum? That's one point. If there's a room for... Second point, I understand this is also a private school, there is no lunch provided, dinner provided, or food provided. So most of us are parents, we give our children packed lunch to take it, in order for them to eat in school. But every time that the children or the child does not eat, is there anywhere in the classroom where there's like a break time or recess? I understand as soon as the break starts, everyone, all the child wants to run out and play a game. Is there any way we can hold them at least five, ten minutes, let them eat their food, and then go out and play? Because if the child has no food, because I understand breakfast, not every child eats breakfast, cereal and all that. So we're relying on lunchtime. Is there a way we can implement next year's PE and good nutritional food that they brought from home, they eat? Barakallah Fiqum.
So how many sisters have questions?
We've been very patient. So to answer your question, brother, yes and yes. We do need, our children absolutely need physical conditioning, I agree with you. And the second thing, we should make it a routine where they have to eat before they play. I believe most teachers do, but we will highlight that, because we do struggle with the boys. They like refuse. They just want to get that ball and run out. So we try, and I know for some of our mothers, it's even a struggle at home. So Subhanallah, the struggle continues here, but absolutely, we will take that into consideration, Insha Allah. Sisters, you had questions?
Salaam alaikum. Jazakallah Khairan. I just want to say my Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala reward you. Recently, I was talking to my daughter, and I was asking her what you like about ISI. And to my surprise, and she's a teenager, so she said teachers. I didn't expect that answer, you know. I expected friends, you know, something else, but she said teachers. And I asked her why, and she said, because they care and they're like mothers. And so I wanted to say that only happens, teachers, from my experience, you know, I was educator. From my experience, teachers are happy and they're willing to go the extra mile when the leadership is great. So Jazakallah Khairan. My question is, are eighth graders gonna have a meeting with the counselor to, for the ninth grade classes? Because I'm not aware as a parent if...
Yes, they will have an orientation.
Okay. Is it this year? Is it gonna be before the end of the school year, or is it, to decide which class is they gonna take it?
We can hold a Zoom for eighth grade parents. Zoom at the end of this year, so they know what to expect, Insha Allah.
And my other question is regarding map testing. In my kids' previous school, usually the child is part of the process, and they know exactly like what their growth is and where their support is. So, if that can be changed, I appreciate.
That can absolutely be changed, and I agree with you. That is one of the things we need to improve, and that is conferencing with our students, with our parents and using that data and letting them be aware of it. I agree with you. And brother Fadlir Rahman, you noted that, right? So, Inshaallah, yes. Next question? You didn't have a question?
It's just about the project. Yeah, yeah. Just, I was wondering if the, the kids can do the project in the classroom?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, right? And they can finish off at home, but they prefer doing it in the classroom.
But I saw that, that's what they're doing, in math, they're doing that. Zero homework. I didn't say zero homework. Subhanallah, okay, zero homework, Sister Shaheen Naz. Let them use all their time at school, I agree with that, that's what we want. So, Sister Shaheen Naz is saying yes, Inshaallah. Okay, Jazakumullah Khair.
Inshaallah, definitely.
I asked you if you have a question, you said no. So, brother, you have, okay.
I'm gonna be very short.
Not short, but make it easy on us.
Okay, easy. So, then let me make easy, first question is maybe for you or for everyone. First of all, thanks everyone, Jazakallah Khair for everything, and maybe it is not good praising in front of the people, but one thing I tell to my, to my friends and everyone that, let's pray for Sister Laila Kaed, never or not to live in this school, not in the whole life. This is I pray, this is I pray, this, I mean, from the core of my heart and all of my friends. So, the question is, brother, I'm not sure, especially, specifically or especially, these two flashing light in the Esther, one is these entrance and another is other entrance, the other side. So, can we talk or take an action item on this one? Because in the morning or evening, because we live around, maybe most of the people here and the other people, maybe the non-Muslim people, they are not blaming on you or me personally, they are blaming or talking about the whole community. Let's say like, not myself, but they are talking, oh, there is, there is a cross U sign, but we are taking U-turn. Lot of people in the morning and after the prayer specifically. This is one question. And second question, maybe two brothers already talked about the homework and the project. So, one of the thing, maybe Dr. Rai, the brother Wasif, they are all technical person. So, can we think something about like the, about the tech, technical project and the technology project? Is, it can be like the, we know like a Google or Microsoft or NASA, they have the programming for kids, all the baby, I mean, not like baby, baby, but the kids. So, we can may have those kind of project in hand in the future, because we all know the technology is like kind of, I mean, the booming the world. So, these two, my question is about the baby programming or technology project, and the second is the flashing light. Thank you so much, Jazakallah Khair.
So, I'll, for the first one, if you're talking more from a city perspective, to make it like a school zone kind of a thing, is that what you're mentioning? Oh, yeah. I think as a masjid, we have tried that earlier. I think due to certain restrictions, limitations and how far the entrance is from the road and things like that, right? We are not eligible to make it a school zone. That's my understanding from what I've heard, but we can get that clarified.
I can clear with them.
Excellent. So, with the upcoming expansion on where our entrance will be, right? We may be eligible for that, is what Sister Shaheen. Jazakallah Khair. And for the second one, Sister Leyla, I mean, we'll take that as an action item, I don't know if we are going to answer that right away, right? They ask us to see how we can get more technology from a programming perspective involved. You want to answer?
I'll be quick, yeah. So, we are, we actually already have two instructor coming from Microsoft, taking a computer science classes today in our school as an elective, right? So, that's one thing. We started robotics program on the technology side, but that's a great suggestion. If you have any other programs that you'd like to recommend, please, you know, we are open to expansion, Inshaallah. Jazakallah Khair.
Once again, Jazakallah Khair for all your time. Inshaallah, we'll have the closing Dua by Sheikh Hassan. Jazakallah Khair, Barakallah Fiqum.
Alhamdulillah, assalatu wa salam ala rasoolillah wa ala alihi wa sahbihi ajma'in. Everyone took his time and speak, so you sit and listen to me now. I'm going to give you a lecture, I'm going to make you go home. Well, Alhamdulillah, brothers and sisters, you have seen it all, you've heard it all, you've seen the data, you've heard the stories. No doubt, it leaves no doubt, if you reflect on what you saw and what you heard, that we do have a great school, Alhamdulillah, great, successful school. And anytime you see success, expect expansion and growth. And anytime you see expansion and growth, expect cash. Anytime you see cash, expect Hassan Khalil coming to you. We need 1.2 million dollars, Inshaallah, for Islam School of Irving to continue the message, passing the Sunnah, Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, continue the Tawheed, La Ilaha Illallah. Great job, great school, great students, great parents, great BTO, leaders, staff, educators, volunteers, everything is great, Alhamdulillah. And all I can say is Jazakumullah Khair. Asalallahu subhanahu wa ta'ala, yubadikallakum fi amwalikum wa fi auladikum wa fi shahatikum wa fi mazid bin attaqadum, Inshaallah. I pray for the school to continue the journey of success and to continue relying on Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, number one and, and first of all, and then on every one of us, Inshaallah. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala reward you. We continue and terminate the meeting, Inshaallah, by saying, Subhanakallahu muwabihamdek, Ashhadu ala ilaha illa ant, Astaghfiruka wa atubu ulayk. Thank you for coming, thank you for sharing, thank you for supporting, may Allah bless you, have a good day. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.